Okay, we have a quorum?
We do.
All right. All right. We have public comment. You don't have to, but we'd like you to sign in if you're going to speak or attend the meeting. Select Board Liaison on Managed Reports, close of the warrant for May for a special town meeting, vote to call special election for May 13th, update on our bank and other funds from Sharon, vote of support for the two projects, KILLUM and RECAL, Commissioner of Trust Funds update, that's in our packet, discuss possible creation of Disabilities Council, something I might pack up about that, discuss renewable energy trust membership agreement, future agenda, and meeting minutes. So tonight, if this doesn't look familiar, we're in the library tonight because they're working on the sound system in the select board room. So we have a pretty good agenda tonight. So if anyone would like to speak, a few housekeeping, next week is the election. Didn't know early voting started until Thursday. And if anyone's going to speak, please, no campaigning for yourself or anyone else. And tonight is Mark Doxer's last public select board meeting on this side of the aisle. So half the leaves on reports, we're going to have a little, you know, to-do, some cupcakes and no champagne, I see, but.
Cupcakes.
Public building. So thank Mark for all the service. Mark's going to make his remarks. And that is not on the agenda, but that's what we're going to do. So first, if anyone would like to speak on public comment, come up to this podium over here. Anyone have a comment?
Thanks for giving us, the public, the opportunity to speak and make a few comments about Mark Doxer's service to our town. I think he has done it perfectly. I think that he is a role model for middle-aged people like myself, as well as my teenage daughter, for how to behave publicly. And because I don't really have the words to say it nicely, I grabbed a few quotes from people who are better speakers or have speechwriters. They're about service, leadership. Abraham Lincoln said nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. And I think Mark has endured adversity on this board of his character, yet he never exerted power, only more character to maintain the strength in his character. Colin Powell said that leadership is all about people. It's not about organizations. And it's not about plans. It's not about strategies. It is all about people, motivating people to get the job done. And Mark motivates people. He has a delicate, subtle, adult way of talking about his ideas without making anyone else feel smaller. I really appreciate that. Teddy Roosevelt said, when you're asking if you can do a job, just tell them certainly I can. And then get busy and find out how to do it. Because I believe nobody is born knowing how to be a Reading select board member. But Mark never said no. He learned. He prepared by serving for years on many organizations, other capacities. He continued to learn while he was on the board. And I don't, I don't think he's done. I think he'll keep contributing and learning. I don't think he's, he's a young man. I don't think he'll ever be done learning. And he says yes. He says, yes, I can. Yes, I will try. And Eleanor Roosevelt said, do what you feel in your heart to be right, for you will be victimized anyway, criticized anyway. We all are. We all are. We, but we are trying to do our best. I think Mark has always tried to do his best. I'm very grateful. I know so many people are truly grateful, Mark. Talk about individual moments, maybe of your tenure as a select board member, but I think it's an overall sense of you are truly a leader, you are inspiring, you are kind, you're always kind. I just, I think you've done it terrifically. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Angela Binda, precinct five. I don't have any quotes, so those were all very good and very fair. But I just want to thank Mark for all of his service, for your generous time. I think you put in a full nine years on FinCom, so that's great. And it's great to have that experience when you come up to the select board, because it really, you know, you're coming to it with a lot of knowledge. And that is what you brought to the select board. Your knowledge, calm demeanor, and always very generous with your time. I know that I've called you up numerous times before town meetings, saying, okay, can you please explain to me what this part of the budget means again? And can you please explain this to me? Because after all these years, I'm not a finance person. And it still is difficult. But you are always very generous and to just go over it again and talk. And you've always been very generous with your time. And I do appreciate, you know, your, your thoughtfulness, the way that you put forward your ideas without putting down anyone else's ideas and just sort of put it out there for people to think about and to try to come up with the best solution, even if it wasn't always, you know, the direction you might want to go in. You, you took that too, because it's a board of five and, you know, that's just the way it is sometimes. So thank you very much for your service.
Anyone else in the room? Jackie's right. Jackie's on the.
Yes.
Jackie, anyone on Zoom, please?
Your roommates on Zoom.
All right. We will go to the liaison reports. Sorry, Jeff.
Jeffrey Coram, Ridge Road. I want to just echo those that spoke ahead of me and thank you for your service. It was a pleasure to, to serve with you on the ARPA committee. And thank you for all of your other service in the finance committee, on the select board, and your reasoned approaches and your very thoughtful comments and deliberations in all of those bodies. Thank you.
All right. So liaison reports. Karen?
Sure. So in the last couple of weeks, the two highlights for me were attending the evening session of the RECAL project. An overview was very well attended. Appreciate staff and Sharon's not here tonight, coming and talking and answering community members' questions. I was pleased to learn that interest forwarding rates for municipalities have come down. We've been using a 4% figure. And what we're hearing now is that for both of these two important projects, we should be in the threes. I believe 15-year was 3.25 and 20-year is 3.5 and 25-year went up another quarter percent. So that's good. Every little bit helps. And I wanted to remind everyone that just like a homeowner, if rates continue to drop, we have the opportunity to refinance these bonds, which is always going to be something that saves the community money. So that was a well-done presentation. And this past Friday, I attended the, I served as a panelist for a conference for the Massachusetts Women Elected Municipal Officials. It's always a pleasure to network with other elected town councilwomen, selectmen, and municipal town administrators there. We hosted Catherine Clark as our keynote speaker. And, you know, she was happy to come in. She's been flying all over the country and just talked to us about now what it's like to be the highest-ranking women elected official in the federal government, which is, took a few people aback. One of the things I've learned about during our networking sessions is that you'll see local transportation in other communities, like Merrimack Valley Regional Transportation. And so I was networking with the mayor of Amesbury. And I said, gee, we don't have that support in Reading and we really need it. We're building a new senior center, community center. And she said, oh, sure you do. Everybody's, everybody's in part of these regional transportation groups. So she looks us up and our regional transportation group is the MBTA. So, you know, so anyway, that, you know what? That's just another thing we can talk to them about. They, they are our local regional transportation entity. And, and, and now that we have these wonderful conversations underway with them about their plans for Reading and our needs, we can add that to the list. How are you going to improve local transportation so that just like Beverly and just like Newburyport and just like Amesbury, we can get our residents around and especially our seniors who may not want to be driving? How can, how can we best support them and get support from the state as well? Because right now, we're fully self-funded. So that's it. Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Carla. Not much going on, other than a school committee meeting recently for me. But other than that, just an update on the potential $11 million MWRA buy. I don't know if Matt was bringing this up, but our state delegation brought up Brad Jones, Rich Haggerty, and Jason Lewis sent a letter to the MWRA, fully supporting our potential at getting up to the $11 million back. So it's good to see that more of that is, is continuing and it's not just fallen by the wayside, that they're still proceeding, supporting us. And hopefully, we'll see what happens with that in the future. And other than that, it is my oldest daughter's 13th birthday today, so happy birthday to her. So Mark will always remember your last day was Autumn's birthday when she turned a teenager. I'm sure you'll love knowing that in the future.
Thanks, Melissa.
Mr. Chairman, point order. I'm getting a report that nobody on Zoom can hear.
Everybody needs to make sure their mics in front of them are on green. Press the button.
That is for the room.
All green.
Yeah. The ones here are picking up, this picks up the Zoom, this smaller ones pick up RCTV.
Which one's Zoom in the front?
This one is Zoom. The one closest to you is Zoom. Yep.
I need labels. Okay. All right. Thank you, Melissa.
I listened in to the budget meeting back mid-March. And one thing that was brought up that I think that we as a board should put on our agenda at some point to discuss was that the town facilities department is, they asked for $200,000 to bring in a consultant to do a building assessment for schools and town buildings. And I really think that should somehow wrap into our capital planning. I don't know why we wouldn't want to include that with our plan, to do our capital plan, just so we're not spending it twice. That was one thing. And then school committee meeting the other night, I was not able to make it in person. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank Chuck Robinson for his years of volunteer service with the town on the school committee and FinCom. During that meeting, they also announced that the MSBA is now, they increased their reimbursement for the KILLUM program, KILLUM School, for additional $1.5 million. So they are paying, I think, 52.9% of eligible costs the MSBA will cover now. At that meeting, they also discussed school choice and they are going to continue with that program. I also wanted to take a minute to thank Mark for all of his service for here in town. I didn't get to, when you announced last time at the last meeting, I had already spoken, so I didn't get a chance to say anything. But, you know, I just, your service on the select board, FinCom, and all the other boards and committees, you know, everyone in this town really appreciates all the hard work that you've put in. I know that you are not going anywhere and we will just see you on the other side. But thank you. And I know everyone in this town has appreciated for you, Jennifer, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thanks. I'm going to go next. Typically, the chair goes last, but I'm going to let Mark have the last word. So I have the opportunity to be on the screening committee for the fire chief and to do the final round of interviews. I'll let Matt speak to that if we're ready or not to say anything. And then CPDC last night went over their flood plan, which they haven't done in a while. And we talked about the election. And yes, I want to thank Mark for six years here, five of them that I was with him. And it was a roller coaster of a ride, but we got through a lot of it together, all five of us, at different times. So I appreciate his service of the town and his service of the board. And it takes a lot of guts to do what we do. So I congratulate him.
Thanks, Carla. So I'll do my liaison report first. I didn't, believe it or not, I didn't come prepared to speak, and I usually do.
Right into the mic.
Oh, right into the mic. Okay.
People having trouble at home, so.
This better?
Yeah.
Sorry, we'll make that work. And guess what? In the select board room, we're going to have better sound soon too, which is awesome. Great. So for a liaison report, so the main activities have focused on the Reading Center for Active Living RECAL. So we had two community meetings, one in the evening last week, one during the day. And as Karen said, well-attended, lots of good questions, lots of people wanting to understand what this is, what it means to them. And I think that's great. Tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, at the Performing Arts Center at the high school, will be a community meeting that focuses on the two big projects that this community is, is taking a look at. So both the RECAL project, sorry, and the KILLUM School project. And great opportunity to hear presentations, ask questions, make sure you understand what's happening and why. They're both tremendous community assets that we're talking about, great projects. So I encourage people to come and attend that. One quick thing, it was, it was brought to my attention at that last meeting, at the RECAL meeting, that when we had our discussion about capital planning, that some folks on, on staff felt like we, or maybe I was slighting them a little bit in terms of the process that they go through with planning. And I just want to assure everybody, that's absolutely not the case at all. I think that the community needs to have more input into the priorities that we set. And we talked about doing that at our meeting in two ways. One, having a master plan. And two, having some kind of advisory on capital planning, whether it be the select board, whatever the mechanism's going to be. That's what we discussed. And so I just wanted to apologize if anybody took offense at that and much more, talk about what's the opportunity for the community to have input. Okay. So that's, those are those pieces. Thank you, folks. Thank you for the wonderful remarks. You're getting, you know, lots of tears coming out of my eyes here. I have really enjoyed serving so far in the community, and I intend to do more of that. But from the other side of the table and working on some other things, it's time to, to kind of make a change here, at least, you know, for, for now. It's really, this is a great community, right? And that's kind of why we volunteer, because we feel that way and we want to make a difference. I hope that I've been able to contribute to that in a lot of ways. And that for me has been very fulfilling. So I really enjoyed that opportunity. So I thank the residents of the community for, for the support with that. I do not plan to go away. I think there are a lot of things that we can still do, taking the community forward. I encourage the future board to, to work on those things if there were. I don't know if there are any words of wisdom, which is one of my favorite expressions, words of wisdom. It's, look, we're here to take the town and help it move forward and to figure out what's the best path to do that. The path can be bumpy. It can have twists and turns. It can do all sorts of weird things. I think this board is the leadership for, for the town and kind of setting direction, setting how we want to do things. I think that's really, really important. We aren't going to agree on everything, and that's okay. And in fact, it's probably good. I think that you make better decisions when people have different opinions they bring in. And to be able to work through that together is great. And I just strongly encourage the, the new board to be able to think that way, to listen to one another, to figure things out, to take it forward, to do it all for the, for the good of the community. We're in a, a turbulent time at the moment. The last several years have shown divisions much more, apparently. And sometimes they bubble over. And that makes things really hard to work through, I have to say. But that's what's even more important, that this board worked really well together, and not just the board, the whole community. You know, Lynn and I have been in this community for 29 years. And we love it. And it's important to us, what happens here. And we just doubled that, and we just did a big renovation on our house. So we're here. I want to stay very involved. I, again, you know, love the community, appreciate folks, you know, coming out tonight and talking about it. And I hope that as things move ahead, we continue to do the things that are, that are right for Reading. And that we can always kind of look ourselves in the mirror and be comfortable and say, yeah, that's, that's, that's good. That's right. We're doing it the right way. So thank you very much. Usually, I'm more prepared with Mark's, but I think that's probably a good place to leave.
All right. Before we take a quick break, I'm going to have Matt do his report and Jane, if anything to add. And then we'll take a quick recess to celebrate Mark a little bit.
Okay. I'll be quick. I don't want to stand in the way of that. It's a hard act to follow, Mark. I do have a few updates. First of all, for the board members in attendance, if you can speak right into the microphone, that's going to help the people at home on Zoom hear everything. So like Mark was doing and Carla was doing and I'm doing right now, just speak right into the microphone and that will be very helpful. The AV upgrades in the select board room at Town Hall are happening right now. They're on schedule. We think we should be done by the end of the week. So starting next week, we'll have some meetings there and it's going to be a lot better. We have bigger screen TVs. There's going to be a lot of different functionality that we don't have, including amplified sound, which we have here tonight, but not in Town Hall. So I appreciate everybody coming to the library tonight while we work on those upgrades, but they're going to be well worth it. So also, I think it was mentioned before, but tomorrow night, we are going to hold the KILLUM RECAL Joint Project Forum, live event tomorrow night at the PAC, at the high school. That should be a well-attended event. We're going to talk about both projects and the cost. And we're going to be there to answer questions, both teams, both OPMs, all coming together in advance of town meeting. That's something people wanted and that's something we're doing tomorrow night. A week after that, on the 16th, there'll be a Zoom-only version of that for people that couldn't come to the PAC tomorrow night. On the 16th at 7 o'clock, we'll have a Zoom portion. And we'll also be there live to answer questions. Quickly, FinCom is going to meet tomorrow night, right before that forum, to vote on the special town meeting warrant. The select board is voting on that tonight, and FinCom didn't want to vote on that before the select board did. So they're going to meet quickly at 6:30 at the Scatina Library, right at the high school. And then we'll be running down to the forum right after that. It shouldn't take long. Tuesday, April 8th, it's not only election day, but it's the day that we begin to distribute the new rubbish and recycling toders. There's a lot more information on the website, but also when people get their toders, there'll be door hangers on the toders themselves with a lot of useful information. And we're putting a lot on social media as well, so that, and realize that's a big change for people. And we'll be rolling those out beginning next week. We're staging the area now. Also on, let's see, there's an Arts and Cultural Action Plan Activation Event. That'll be next Wednesday, or on Wednesday, April 9th, from eight, from 6 to 8, right in this room. They encourage an RSVP for that. You can find out more information on the town website. But we're getting really to the, to the crucial part of the Arts and Cultural Action Plan, where we will put things into, into action and finalize things. So it's important that people come and, and make their wishes known. And again, I would like to thank Mark for his years of service here in the town. When I first started 10 years ago, Mark was still very involved. I believe he was the chair of FinCom. He and Linda both made me feel very welcome in town, inviting me to events, inviting me to their house. And, you know, Mark's been a staple ever since for me in this community. And I'd like to thank him for his service. I hope we can still get, get together and have coffee once in a while. And also, I believe him when he said he's still going to still be involved, because I don't think he knows anything better than to, to help Reading in that way. So thank you again, Mark. And yes, thank you. And then Jane, if you have anything.
You stole my thunder with the information on the trash. So I have a trash and recycling cart rolled out. So I would just like to add my voice to the rest and thank Mark for his service. Congratulate him on a tremendous body of work. And I continue, I look forward to continuing to work with you as we move forward with a variety of projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to take a quick recess here in the room. You guys can watch us on TV if you want, or you can take a break yourself. What are we doing? What do we do, a show? All right, we are back in session. Next on the agenda is, where are we? Vote to close warrant for May 1st, 2025 special town meeting. And Laura, do you need to have a few words, or we're good?
We're good.
We're good. All right, motion?
It's you.
No, and let's, well, I'll do the motion if anyone has any questions for you. Move to, move the microphone closer to me. Move to close the special town meeting warrant consisting of three articles to take place on May 1st, 2025. That's presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. We can stay right here, I guess. So next, we have a vote to call for a special election on May 13th. Let's have a motion, please. Move pursuant to GL Chapter 59, squiggle thing, 21C, Little K, to place two debt exclusion questions as provided on the document entitled "May 13, 2025 Ballot Questions Presented Here Today." On the ballot for a special election to be held May 13, 2025, and notify the town clerk of such action. I think that's it.
And then there'll be a second part.
Yeah, there's a second motion. There's a second motion? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? 5-0. Guess we have a second motion. Move to hold a, move to hold and call a special election for May 13, 2025, and sign the special election warrant presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? 5-0. Thank you. And we'll assign something, and we'll move on to the next agenda. And is this going to be, oh, I see Sharon on the screen, so in our packet. And maybe we'll get it put on the screen for the audience, is a Burbank Fund and some other funds, and then later we will have, sorry, and then later we will have the Commissioner of Trust Funds on a separate document. Sharon, take it away. I think that'd be helpful. We have it in our packet, but it'd be helpful.
Yep.
Hello, yeah?
Yes.
Can I get you here, okay?
Yes.
A little bit louder would help, but we can hear you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So Matt had mentioned to me that you guys would like a little overview of some of these funds, that have money, that could be potential funding sources for other things. So I put together this little spreadsheet to kind of give you an idea of what's currently in some of these funds, what we're planning to use at April Town Meeting on some of these funds, and what we'd be available after. And what you're seeing on that slide is caper project funds that are complete and, and still have a balance. I'm not sure that the Mallett Stones balance look like there was still probably some encumbrances up there that haven't unfolded and paid, but they do have 400,000 now that Mallett Stones were working MVP project. But I figured I'd show you the balances of, as of the date 3/25 and what we plan on using, just in case that is the final balance. But most of the projects, the issue is sometimes why some of these projects have balances sitting there is that we have to be able to transfer to another capital project with equal or greater debt terms. And so like for the library renovation, you need, you need another building project really to put that towards. So my hope was that with these projects passed, that we could clean up all these remaining balances and move them to those projects. That was our hope. And so I don't know if this is exactly what you're looking for. I hope it is what we were looking for, but do you want me to go over in detail, or is there any questions on it?
I think we'll just leave it for questions. I mean, I, I know I have a couple, but I think if anyone, Karen, I saw Karen first.
Oh, thank you, Sharon. Excellent as usual. I'm just wondering, generally, some of these balances are having some age on them. How long would they remain outstanding? I see your notes must be used on a project of a similar, similar whatever characteristics. How long would we leave these out there if we can't, thank you, similar borrowing? If we can't, you know, fit them into projects, what happens?
Well, it's just, it's there unfortunately, and as a percentage of what we borrowed, if it's, if it's a lot, I'm trying to use that money wherever we can. The last improvement project, there was some significant delays. I think there was state funding involved in that, and there was some problems with the work at some points, and that was out there for a long time, and we weren't entirely sure it was complete for a while, because they had stopped work for a period of time. But most projects are just kind of small little reminders that we just have to recognize are there and, and make a decision to move them towards something else. Like Parker Roof, that's the gift that just keeps on giving. There's still money in there, and I don't know how. I think they have, and I asked Joe, I think they were saying that they have a duplicate PO in there, and so if we close that, we still have money in there. So here are nice little places to pull for capital projects, but again, I have to make sure that where I'm moving to has equal or greater terms for borrowing. And when it comes to the library, most projects, unless it's a building project, is not qualified.
Mark, I saw your hand up.
Thanks, sir. So Sharon, just to understand, so conceivably somewhere around $800,000 might be a possible number to, to be thinking of rolling based on the big projects?
Just looking at this, or after the April Town Meeting, if these approvals for April Town Meeting, it looks like about that. But again, I'm not entirely sure about Mallett Stones and why there's so much money still in there, including that all the invoices and clear on it. But that's what I'm projecting at this point. I've got to get more clarification on that, the tip in the capital project, but that's what it looks like.
Good, thanks. And I think, Matt, if I understand correctly, also the way that the warrant articles are written, the sources of funds can be kind of, in, so in other words, if there were available balances here and the desire was to move these balances, that's, that's an okay funding mechanism.
The word is purposely vague in terms of borrowing or using any other funds. We use it, we, we use that kind of language so that we, we're not, you know, pigeonholed into one fund or another or borrowing for the entire amount. So that's why, you know, you see that kind of language in a warrant, and that's correct. You can use, Sharon could correct me if I'm wrong, but you can use any sort of available funds to, to spend, not just borrowing.
I'm amplifying my thumbs up.
Okay. Any other questions? This is good.
I just wanted to mention that for the idea of moving these towards, you know, like the Salem project or the Recount project, we always wait until we knew the project was approved before we do anything at Town Meeting, because it would be pointless to make it for a project and then it didn't pass, you know, so that's why these are still sitting there, as we were keeping them, hoping to be able to use them to reduce borrowing on those projects.
Yep.
Thank you. Just a quick ques, a quick, what's a review of the General Stabilization Fund? I was a little surprised to see that in there, because the way I've always understood it is, and the way other communities use this, is this is, this is really the untouchable stuff. This is, this is the rainy day fund of the rainy day funds. And, and I don't disagree, I'm sure it's like completely without restrictions, but I wouldn't want to give people the idea that this is like a bucket of money that we're really going to intend to spend. And in fact, we've had, you know, we've talked about when free cash starts rising, should we be increasing this general stabilization fund? Because it's a pretty small percentage of the budget. In other communities, we talked about Salem, for example, have, you know, maybe four, 5% in the stabilization fund. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you've said in the past that that's one of the things that our bond councils will look to, you know, to make sure that we are setting aside kind of that. Those, those funds that really aren't meant to be touched. I just want to be clear about that. This isn't really a fun, a pool that we would draw from.
We could draw from it, but I tend to agree with you. I feel like the stabilization fund is kind of the last resort type of fund, but it can be used with a two-thirds vote. And there has been discussion with FinCom at some point, including, you know, our 7%. Make sure the 7% of the balances in there is out, the money that was there, getting from the override before act. So it was to build some stabilization funds for us, and we haven't used it at all. So I would generally say this is that untouchable piece that we tend not to use, and that we entertain the idea of potentially moving whatever we need to have our 7% just sitting there. But when it comes to bond rating agencies, they look at all your reserves. So they're looking at a general stabilization fund as well as your free cash. To say these are all your reserves, because they're looking at both of them combined. It doesn't matter to them how they're broken out, but making it harder to spend down with two-thirds vote is the reason the stabilization fund is usually used, is to kind of say, this is our baseline, so these funds should be used. But it is available and can be used. And so when I was asked what available funds are out there, I felt like it should be known that there is funds out there as stabilization, that free cash isn't the only thing out there. For example.
Thank you. I guess for me, you know, other than the general stabilization fund that, you know, I'm always aware of, and I was going to ask a question about Parker, but you answered it, I think it'd be a good exercise for us to, you know, look at this at least twice a year and, and see what projects are fully done, so we can allocate and recommend as a board, and I'm not sure what needs Town Meeting approval or not, or if it's just us and you, or just you. But, you know, we've got some big dollar amounts in here that are well-needed. So I think we should have it as a standing agenda item, at least, you know, maybe January, and then again in June or July, something like that, just so we keep up to date, or you can just tell us, hey, this project is done. just so we keep up to date, or you can just tell us, hey, this project is done, or let Matt know, and you have 30,000, 40,000, 100,000 that, that you can put towards something else. So I think we have to do a better job, um, not that you're not, but just for us to know what's in these funds and what we can do, what we have access to. Um, I know right now that, like you said, Mallett Stones you're not sure of, Parker seems clear, clear, West Street seems pretty much done, um, you know, Ice Arena Funds are always, you know, adding to those funds. So anyway, I think this was a good exercise. And then the next one, at, at least once a year. I don't think we've done the Commissioner Trusts since I've been on the board for five years. So I think we'd do that once a year as well. Any other questions?
I can provide an update anytime you want, um, as part of our quarterly update. Um, and I agree that you would need to be logged, and maybe so many of these funds as would Finkham, and it would have to be a Town Meeting vote, because this is, most of these capital project funds are debt. And so in order to move it to another project, you need a Town Meeting vote.
Yeah, so I think the, the timing of it would be, you know, winter, before April Town Meeting, and then late summer, early fall for November Town Meeting. So that would be a good exercise for us. Um, if there's no, if there's no other questions, we're going to move, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, Carl. So Sharon, by you mentioning that it can only be moved by Town Meeting, are we not able to now move all these numbers? Because Town Meeting's going to happen in Finkham, and we have not voted anything beyond your middle column there? So the Parker Roof isn't going to anything at the moment?
No, because I guess I was under the assumption that these any balances that we have remaining would be most useful for something like Recal or Killam, where we'd be trying to reduce borrowing. And we wouldn't do that until after those have passed, so that would be at the earliest, at November Town Meeting, we could do that. So, um, that was my assumption, maybe the wrong assumption, but I just think that that's where it would be most used, because it would save us excluded debt that's being added back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, I understand in the, in the grand scheme that the numbers towards the middle down are, you know, small potatoes compared to what you just mentioned, but any amount would help in advance, you know what I mean? Um, so obviously, you know, a million dollars off, you know, 150 or whatever this is going to end up being is, is almost nothing, but it does make it a little easier, so.
It's a good way. A project like a building project, there's never a question, because the borrowing terms, these thirty years, you know, so that qualifies any borrowing here as to the divisional question. All the other ones, I have to say, I have to compare it borrowing terms. It just seemed like that this project, one of these two projects would be a good place to put these.
I would say then for the special Town Meeting for this, just to bring this up, that like I said, it, it's not a big sum of money, but it is something, you know, to say that we have all these extra items outstanding that aren't going to things, like $13 for the turf and track isn't paying for like two hot dogs and a Gatorade, but like, it's, you know, get rid of it. We paid everybody to deal with it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Next, uh, agenda item is a vote of support. It's not binding, it's kind of a, just what it says, a vote of support. Mark brought this forward, and I, I fully agree, as elected town leaders, these two projects are the biggest projects that are in front of us and have been a long time. So this is a symbolic vote. It's not a binding, it's not needed, but I, I think it is important. So we'll do the motion. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. Move to support the Killam School Building and Senior Center slash Reading Center for Active Living, living Recal Projects. Second.
Thank you. So now we'll have discussion.
Mark, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, thanks, Carl. So, um, thanks for, for bringing this forward. I think that's, you stated earlier, Nancy, Carl, these are the two kind of big projects serving major slots of the community that can really make a difference. And I think Town Leader should needs to be clear that these are priorities, and bring it forward. I think Town Meeting needs to hear it, and Finkham needs to hear it, and then Town Meeting needs to hear it, the voters need to hear it. So we have the opportunity to do exactly that, just to make sure that they have the opportunity to hear from the Town Leader. This is, these are the priorities. So let's do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris? Thanks, Carl. Um, yeah, I agree. I understand that this is, um, more of a symbolic gesture. I'd be biased, because I've, you know, been on Killam for a bit now, and seeing how everybody over there worked together, and I believe every vote was almost unanimous as well on that project, and that's a mix of anybody in, in Reading for the most part, from any angle, area that you want to bring up, somebody has had a seat at the table, at least on a town. And I'm sure the same thing's happened with Recal along the way. The Permanent Building Committee is one of the most unbiased, unblushed kind of committees in this entire town that, you know, it's good to see that they got created out of something, uh, I believe it was the library and high school overage or something like that is why they got created. So I, I do have my own reservations on this. It's, I don't think it's my time and place to just, you know, give my opinion one way or the other on, on any of these projects. Uh, I think the biggest thing is that I agree that it should be put forth to the voters in this town to make the ultimate decision. It's not up to me, it's not up to us five, it's up to the, you know, Town Meeting and then the entire town. So I would hope that Town Meeting would put it forward as well, and then just let really the voters decide on this. And people can have their opinions then, and have lawn signs, and however else they feel that they want to do this. But I appreciate everybody's time and effort that has gone into it. This, it's been a long time for everything, um, you know, and that's essentially how I feel on this, is that it's, it's not up to me.
Karen?
Thank you. Um, so this is a, a great item to have on our agenda tonight. And when we talk about the leadership of the town, we talk about the elected boards, um, not just the select board, but also the school building committee. And having served on that building committee for two and a half years, and put a lot of effort, effort into it, and having been as involved as I could be and as supportive as I have been able to be for the Recal, um, project, and I'm very excited about bringing that resource to our community. As Mark has said in any number of times, it, it touches so many members of our community with these two projects. So I think this vote is important for the residents to send a message from the select board and to also, as you noted, to, you know, reach out to, to the finance committee and the school committee, that both of these projects are very important, and, um, we should support them for the benefit of our residents.
Melissa?
Thank you. I agree that both of these projects are to the benefit to everyone in this town. It really does touch everyone in this town with both of these projects. I have, I have my concerns that the tax increase could negatively affect some people in this town, but with that being said, I still think that these projects need to go to the voters, and the town residents need to make the decision on this. And I will advocate as much as I can to help those that it may be a burden for, whether it's seniors or other families, or other families in this town, and also try to alleviate the pressure of both projects with coming up with a plan for the current Pleasant Street Center, and, you know, plans like that to try to just alleviate, and maybe those funds can help a little bit, maybe if it's even just with some of the costs that will come with Recal if it gets passed. But I will support this, both of these projects to go to the residents of this town.
Thank you. Yeah, we've done this before, had some symbolic votes, and I, I agreed to put this on there. I fully support it. I, I'm a little biased. I was a Killam family for all three of my children, and, and this has gone back, you know, fifteen, seventeen years for my first child. So it's been a long time coming, and his family's even before me that this school was needed. So Killam, I've said in the past, is, is, you know, long overdue. It's been a priority for a long time. So I'm glad the MSBA got involved, and we're fortunate, fortunate to get in, in all the work that everyone has done. This is years and years, like Chris said, Mark's sentiments said it best. And I think the voters, you know, this is very impactful for the town and very good for the town. So there's a lot of benefits. But, you know, we've heard from residents, I'm sure all five of us, on the impacts, um, positive and negative. But I, I fully support both projects. Like Chris, I have my personal opinions, but it's not up to me, it's at the Town Meeting and the voters. And on May 13th, we will vote on both of these projects, and I look forward to everything in the future. So we had that, that's all in favor. Five zero, thank you. Next, we have, it's in our packet, Commissioner Trust Funds. I don't know if anyone is gonna, we'll get that on the screen for everybody. And Neil is gonna say some kind words, I'm sure.
Words.
Both, I think, but amplified.
This is Green's, what's this one?
Yep.
Okay. I, I do have a kind word from Mark, of course. Mark has been the select board's liaison to the Commissioner of the Trust Funds for five years. Did you start on your first year? I don't remember. I think five. Okay. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I appreciate your service, your help, your input, your guidance, and we're going to support. Thank you very much. I'm just here to, to talk to you about the trust funds. Um, I can answer any questions. I think a lot of you know, there's a list of all the funds that we have up here.
Excuse me. The large mic, pull it, the, that one, yep, bring it close.
That's the one?
Yes, here and in the room.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, so we have the cemetery funds, we have the Trail Committee Fund, which is a new fund, we have the hospital funds, which I'm sure everyone wants to talk about, the library funds, scholarship funds, and Elder Services. Most of these funds are administered by the separate boards, the trustees of the library, the library trustees, excuse me, administer the library funds, um, sorry. Cemetery trustee administered by cemetery trustees, scholarship support by the Scholarship Foundation of the School of Fire, and so forth. Elder Services, the trustee administered by the council and agent. Our responsibility is simply to manage the money, invest the money, and expend the money as we're directed. Um, the hospital funds, as you know, are the bulk of this. Um, there is, um, over $6 million in funds, and if you see what is expendable and what's not expendable, almost all is expendable. The non expendable amount is simply the amounts that were left to the town originally. The first one was left in 1925 by Gilman Parker, who left $35,000. And because of that, the Massachusetts Legislature in 1926 created the Commissioner Trust Funds to manage this money for the top of the grant, which is what we've been doing since then. Um, we are very hampered in what we can do with the hospital funds. As I think you know, the original will of Gilman Parker was to start a fund to build a hospital in Reading, expecting that other donations would be added. There were two additional donations, one in 1947 from Stephen Foster and one in 1952 from Andy Gerard. Um, those wills all directed that the interest on the funds can be used to pay hospital bills of needy people in the interim until a hospital was built. And that's what they were used for. Um, as you can see, we, we're not able to spend all the money that we were there using. And so that in 1988, uh, the town decided to seek what's called a document of side prey and then order from the courts to change the charitable intent of the, the gift. But it has to stay within the parameters of the will. So the side prey document allowed us to use the funds for in-home healthcare, transportation to hospitals, and other approved medical centers or facilities, and other medically related services authorized by the commissioners. So we've, we've tried to use these funds, and we've worked with Elder Services to implement these. We've used these for transportation, we use them for, um, the, the health line.
Lifeline?
Sorry.
Lifeline?
A lifeline, thank you. It's not called a lifeline anymore, so I can't use that word. Uh, but, um, those are the types of things. In the past, we've tried other things. Elder Services has come to us and said, you know, we have some citizens that need the funds for, we've tried to pull the sponsors. We have tried using these funds for some rest of care for caregivers. And we, we having difficulty spending the money. We can't spend all the money that we have, unfortunately. And so that's why that amount of money is sitting there, and it looks like it's doing nothing. But we're very limited in what we can do with it.
Karen?
Sure, thank you. Um, so, so 1988 it was, was the last time we attempted to expand as a community. Tried to use the Latin phrase, which means give us more flexibility?
Yep, 1988.
Okay. So, you know, I, I think that's a really long time, and, and that might be one thing this board might consider, whether it's time to take another look. Um, but I just wanted to ask you a little bit about, I like some of the ideas that you have tried to do. Um, we run ambulances, and, and people have heard me say multiple times, it's a mobile hospital in this day and age, and, um, but I, I like that it's, it's been attempted to use them, ambulance rides are like four grand apiece. So, and we have people that, you know, don't, don't always have the resources to cover that. So I was just wondering, when you said, we haven't, you haven't had great luck spending this, like what is, is it because the purposes you're coming up with are being rejected, or is it because we're not doing a great job of making sure that everybody could benefit is, is being told, or what, what is the challenge?
I think part of it is people are not aware of it. But the, the thing that hamstrings us the most is that these funds are only for Reading residents, but they're also for what are referred to as needy residents.
Could you define needy?
We have defined needy as using HUD's eligibility income for assisted living. We use the same, um, metrics that HUD would use. So Elder Services, again, who administers for this for us, they take intake, they do intake with people in town, and they have the income information for these people, and they determine whether they would be eligible for the services that we can provide from the hospital trust funds. We can't use these funds for the general public. So we can't take $4,000 for an ambulance ride, or to buy a new ambulance, which would be, obviously, it could benefit to everybody. We had to do that, but.
But, but are those HUD guidelines, the same kind of income guidelines that we use for affordable housing in town?
They are, yes.
Exact same. So, and thank you for saying that we could probably do a better job of, of highlighting these funds. Okay, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else on the board? Oh, sorry. Anyone else on the board? Chris?
Thanks, Carl. And thank you for the presentation. I would love to create some creative pickleball hospital floating center over on Simon's Way or something for six and a half million. Sounds great. Um, just a quick AI search of what we can actually potentially use these for. It looks like you might be able to create a scholarship program for nurses and doctors to pursue training. I understand it would be Reading with income limits that you just mentioned, but is that indeed something that it could be used for? Like, create a scholarship for some kids at the high school, or something that decide to want to go into nursing or something like that?
I wouldn't say no. I, I don't know that. That would probably be something that we'd have to run by Town Council, but that, you know, that's a creative idea, creative thinking that would help us use some of these funds for something beneficial, absolutely.
Yeah, because in, in your opinion, this is just going to sit for hours. You will never be able to spend down beyond the, the interest that you're accruing.
Yes, and we'll totally go to the hospital, yes. Yes, and we'll totally go to the hospital, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think getting an update once a year give me more time to look into my own creative way of thinking to see what we can do with this. But absolutely, we gotta do something. And if only two people qualify under this fancy scholarship thing or whatever, that is two people that actually got some good use out of it.
Absolutely.
We'll see what we can do.
And Karen's suggestion that we consider another shot, you know, the side brain under changes, a good suggestion as well, definitely something.
I started here solar as well. I think AI might be wrong in this, but who knows? Because then we could put solar on something, sign us up. So we'll see how that goes. Thanks.
All right, so Mark first.
Thanks, Carolyn. So this is something that I've been actively talking about as the old tell you, trying to think about what might we be able to do with some of these funds. One of the things that, just as long as we do a creative thinking for a moment, was if we're doing more nursing oriented services for needy patrons administered through, let's say, the Recal Center, maybe that's, that's something along the lines that could be useful also. And even within the current guidelines, that probably would be interesting to think in Town Council, that's the guy that's worried ahead. But I think that's the kind of stuff that could be, you know, just creatively thought through, what can we do that's really going to benefit those needy folks? We should just do the grand doors of these funds in the first place. Thanks.
Melissa?
Thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it and for you coming here tonight. I was actually going to say something very similar to what Mark said. I think that maybe we could use it for something. And the new Recal Center, that would be fantastic. And I just want to confirm, so the council and agent knows the guidelines, so they know if they see someone come in that they could probably reach out to you guys for any cost for an individual?
It's elder services.
Elder services, I'm sorry. So elder services, and is elder services in the current Pleasant Street Center? Do they have? Is that correct? Okay. So they know all the guidelines, so they know to reach out to you?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
My pleasure. And just to pick up on what Mark said, some of the brainstorming that we've done in our sessions. We've talked about something similar like Mark said, and we've talked about having a situation where we're giving vaccinations to the folks in town, which would be great. But we get that restriction again, we can't do it for everybody in town. It has to be the people that need the income that we're, so that's, that's the hard part. But, you know, anything that we can think of to use these funds would be fantastic. I, you might have been watching this fund grow for a long time, and we unfortunately have been able to spend, as I said, money and everything. You know, it's nice that the fund's growing bigger, but it would be nice if we made it smaller too, because we're using it, bringing it to their use.
I have a question, I'm guessing you guys have addressed numerous times, is that, is there any provisions or anything we can do with the families, the heirs of the families that can adjust or give up their rights? I mean, I know the will is specific, I'm sure you have to honor it, but it is, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. I'm guessing you guys have discussed that, or?
Yeah, we have, yes. And I don't think there's anything we can do with that in that case, because these have all been all accepted by town meeting as they were written.
Yeah.
Well, town meeting can do more, can accept and modify what they did. I mean, I'd love to have a brainstorming session. We, we write the warrant for town meeting, and I don't think these five people are the only ones that think we'd like to do more, and yourself included. So I wouldn't want that to be a hurdle.
Sure.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't think it was this big. I knew it was in the millions, but this was shocking. And I think in 50 years, we'll have the fight to build a hospital, but, you know, wait that long. Or an urgent care, at least something. But I think, I agree with Karen that we have to take a look under the hood. And I hate spending, you know, Town Council money, but I think it's worth it. And to see if we can put a warrant out in front of town meeting and to like, again, I don't know, I'm an attorney, so I'll stop there. But I think, so I'm glad you guys came tonight. Again, we've heard about this through Mark. We've never had you guys come present. Mark has talked about it, the various funds over the years. But again, another good exercise for the board, I think at least once a year. But all the funds seem to be doing good for a lot of people, and that's what we want, and that's what they were intended for. So thank you, and we'll see you next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Carolyn, just a shout out to the, to the trust fund commissioners. So the, the folks do have responsibility for investing this money and have, I think, done a great job of conservatively investing it and getting a good return. And there were existing members that brought a lot, some new members are bringing a lot to the table, and it's really great. And just as a quick commercial, I know that there's, there are a couple openings, basically. So one select board member, one, one finish the open spot.
Yeah, thank you. I just, you know, I look forward to whoever is going to be the select board leaders. I hope for meeting them and working with them as well. Back to the questions.
Thanks.
Thank you. A quick question from Matt, and it was about the cemetery funds. So you have to hook, oh, okay. So I was just a general question. So we have, obviously, we have staff, we have cemetery staff. How are these funds used to support our cemeteries? And it's good to see that these are healthy figures.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's why I put man on them.
All I know is that the money goes out every month, too. I think we spend, I remember, like $10,000 a month to come up and go out of the cemetery fund money to the cemetery, and the trustees spend that. So now we don't have to let you answer that question.
Yeah, and I can find out more information on that. I know that that's what happens. I don't know exactly what they spend it on, but let me talk to the cemetery trustees and find that, and we'll get back to you on that.
That would be, that would be helpful. Maybe there's some help for operations there. I don't, I don't know, because I don't know the answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Neil, thank you. Everyone?
Can I make the motion to end our board meeting now?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. Thanks for coming. So next, we have discussed possible creation of a disabilities council. And Matt did a little bit of research, and it's in our packet. It's, it can be done, but it's a lot, you know, with the jump, the jumps and the hoops to get it done. So Karen won this on the agenda, so I'll let Karen start with any comments or questions on the memo that was in the packet.
Well, I'd like to thank Matt for doing this research and going out and bringing this. This memo does give us some good guidelines for doing this. This was requested of me by several residents, and we have received a couple of emails as well encouraging us to go ahead and do this and subsequent town meeting. So we have, we have a path, and, you know, I'd love some more input from staff. I'm also getting calls from residents who are now, or calls and emails frustrated about maybe their disability or inability to deal with large trash bins, with trash carts. And, you know, so far, the policies there are really focused on seniors. But what I'm learning more and more is that the accessibility, I'd rather say accessibility rather than disability, it's, it's far reaching. So is this the only thing we could name it? I think Disability Commission or?
I think, I mean, that's what it's called for in the statute. And sometimes it takes the statute a while to catch up, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I could look to see, you could maybe call it, that could be the official legal name, and then it could be something else, maybe.
Yep. Because I have talked to any number of residents that talk about, you know, curb cuts, handrails, and we have lots and lots of discussions with Recal. It's, you know, we don't want to just meet the minimum ADA. We need to make it accessible. But I'm surprised at how many ways this comes up. And as long as we didn't make it 13 members, I think we could find members in the community who would be willing to serve and with the right skills to do a good job with this. So this would be something that I would hope the select board would like to take seriously.
Any other comments from the board? Mark?
Thanks, Carolyn. Kind of carried this with me. So Marilyn, is it called universal accessibility? Is that the right?
No, it's universal design.
Universal design, thank you. That's what it is, too.
It's accessible for everyone.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, as it relates to new construction that's going on, and being refurbished and things like that, thinking for it that way and taking it beyond ADA, just as Karen said, is great. The other part of it, though, relates to existing structures, buildings, walkways, you know, all sorts of other activities where there's an opportunity to do better, I guess is the right way to put it. So I think this is a really good thing for the board to take a look at and even see if we could find a group of people that need the requirements, that would be willing to participate, just to make sure that's cool. Thanks.
Melissa?
I just had a quick question. What is the difference between, like, having our ADA compliance officer who's Laura versus having a commission? And also assuming that all, you know, when it comes to new buildings, maybe not existing buildings, there are building codes that have to be followed. And I always thought they kept up with the ADA compliance stuff. State codes always, they don't. Okay, not always. Okay. So what would the difference be having a commission versus just an ADA, like officer?
From my understanding, you can have both. You can have the commission and the ADA coordinator. Currently, right now, that's Laura, and she's held that title for many years. I think when they created that position, the default was, you know, the town clerk. So that's basically how she got that position. So, I mean, I think they could work hand in hand together. One change, you know, I've received a request to name Albert Bless as the ADA coordinator. Laura is in agreement with that as well. It's a little bit off her plate, and he may be bringing some fresh ideas to that, you know, in addition to his other duties. So I'm inclined to, to make that appointment. And that, you know, whoever the person is would work closely with the Disability Commission if one was created. We also do have a building department. Unfortunately, our building, our building commissioner has, is leaving actually tomorrow for another job in another municipality, but we are looking to fill that, that position. And if there, if there were ADA type complaints, we would also have that person look into them from a building code standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Thanks, Carolyn. Yeah, no, I agree with Matt. When I looked at this a couple months ago, what other cities and towns are doing, I did see that it's typically under their Director of Equity and Social Justice, et cetera, kind of positions. It's typically where it has lied. So I support what you have mentioned by having Albert take care of it. Laura's done a phenomenal job, too, as well. I know that Todd Hall has been, you know, the back door thing was squared away, bathroom stuff. What, Parker or Killen, something happened over there, too, as well. So, I mean, things are actively happening in the town in the last two, three years. So it's not like we haven't been doing anything.
No, that's correct. She has been working out on that. But I think, you know, she's, she's willing to give that up and concentrate on elections and all the other work she does.
Yep.
Karen, did you have your hand up again?
I did, just a second. So, thanks, so I don't know if this is true, but the thought I had is that this is more kind of actively identifying and pursuing new opportunities to make changes, more so than compliance, which is maybe responding to complaints, ensuring that we beat code. The other thing I became aware of through Recal is that there is code, and then there's what might actually be much more useful, which can oftentimes be above code, in figuring out how to, how to make that part of the discussion. I think that that's something this group could do. And, you know, in Recal, you know, I'm looking at Marilyn, you know, various people served to kind of bring that, that information forward. Michelle Clapper is another person who brought a lot of that information forward. It was very helpful in that whole discussion.
We're not really taking public comments, are we?
I just want to clarify, that's all right.
Thank you. Karen?
I'm also wondering if there might be a parallel with our, what's the, what's our Housing Commission called, where they can have a role, maybe looking for grants to sort of carry out some of the things we'd like to do?
Like the Affordable Housing Trust or the?
Yes, thank you. That's what I was thinking, yeah. Because those folks will be, you know, looking for opportunities, and it is a proactive organization, and there are grants, and I wouldn't be surprised if there are grants in line with this, communities looking to do this as well.
All right, are we good? All right. To be continued, I guess, on this topic. So next, we have discuss renewable energy trust membership agreement. All right, Matt?
Yeah, so this again goes to green communities, and this was the last piece we brought to town meeting to, you know, to sort of agree in principle that the select board would enter into this agreement through me with RMLD. This is the last piece of green community. So this is the part where funds are collected, and it's something like, you know, two or three dollars a year to fund the, the partnership, the membership. And, you know, once we're done with this piece of it, we would be eligible for several grants. You know, the first original grant could be anywhere from $150,000 to $190,000. There's been a lot of work on this, you know, for years here, you know, Karen has done tons of work on it. The agreement itself is a little dense, it's a sort of, well, we're probably a legal agreement. I've worked on it with Jane and also Andrew, who's on Zoom tonight, too, if there's any questions. And tonight, we have just put it on to, for discussion, and we're hoping that it gets voted on the next meeting, which will be the 22nd, and that will be the final piece of green community. So that's my understanding. Go ahead, Karen.
Oh, just a quick question. And thank you for keeping track of this and all of you for moving it forward. So I have not been speaking with the, the green communities people, so I'm just wondering for 2025, what is the rest of the process, the application deadlines?
If Andrew's on, I may have him speak to that, because he's working more closely with that. Andrew, are you, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, did you get the question?
Yes, yes. As I said, I'm the select board and frankly, we need a developer. So the rest of the process is, it's a free market at this time. This is likely to be released until the official designation. This is what, what it's important to get this set contract done soon or later, just because the governor themselves needs to actually sign the designation, and we need to get that done this spring. Otherwise, we're potentially facing, we, we're just really behind the June deadline. But in terms of the process, if it was finalized, and we get the full designation, we need to start working on the designation grant that Matt referenced. We'll have a little bit of time in the year to complete that project, and then we can be eligible for another annual grant.
So, when is, when is the deadline for our, the resubmission or application?
I think we got it in a higher date. Our deadline is December, and we got that deadline, and we've got back and forth with the OER to go back and forth over the last few weeks on some backup information, which we provided them. But all of that, the technical pieces are in, it's just the signature.
Okay, thanks for reminding me. I do remember the first time we put it in, we got, we got, sorry, not going to work this time, because you're having done this space letter pretty quickly. Have you gotten any other feedback from this date?
We have not gotten any other feedback, other than they're just waiting for this contract to finish.
Okay. And I did speak to Rep. Haggerty last week or so, and, and he is most definitely looking for us to keep him updated. They, they want to see us get to the finish line on this. Thanks.
So they're maybe due to have facilities as a project in mind, or are you giving up for the designation grant if we can help it? And that will move pretty quickly, hopefully.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Any other questions? Melissa?
Just a quick question, Andrew. What is the designation grant?
So the designation grant is an initial grant award, when you actually prefer to receive your designation. It's not so competitive a process, it's just one that gets allocated, and if you have a fitting use, you can utilize it right away. It's based on an equation, mostly based on population and some other numbers. Actuarable communities, I think, wait, it's about 160,000 to 180,000 when you have your designation grant. So that's the number you're kind of working in, guessing. grant, so that's the number we're kind of working in, guessing towards, estimating towards, I should say.
Okay, great, and then one other quick question. With the hope that the two building projects get passed, will this program, will we be able to get any grants through this programming thing for those buildings?
Interesting question. Most of the green community grants are dedicated to existing living structure and efficiency improvement, and less so new construction. They do have the planning of the users program, which offers up to whatever dollars you can grant towards for new construction, using senior efficient technology. This is a hurdle you have to go through to get there. I, it could be done within a year, practically, potentially, but, yeah, things like the advanced stretch code, we have the regular stretch code in now, you have to commit that municipal buildings going forward, I think, to be as zero, or there's a road map to bring. Most municipal buildings that has zero by 2050 or so, so there's some logistics to get there, but it is possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Andrew, or? No, good. All right, next week, we will have a vote, it's already on the agenda, that's a good segue to future agendas, so this will be the last meeting that I officially chair, but I will meet with Matt and Jane to review this agenda before we elect a new chair on the 22nd. So right now, we have a bunch of things that we've already discussed, and there's, you know, it's not a lot, but it's going to be some healthy discussions for the Pleasant Street Center and the master plan. We're hoping to get this going by getting a charge going and really, you know, get this going so we can formalize it, maybe late, late spring, early summer, and get the master plan committee going. But if anyone has any suggestions for the 22nd or beyond, I think we've been filling in everyone's recommendations. I know, Mark, you mentioned something about trails, and I'll put that on for the 22nd.
Town Forest.
Town Forest, sorry, Town Forest, I'll put that on there. So that's a small addition, not a big agenda item. Yep.
We have, Matt has informed me that we now have the final portrait for the Select Board Room of Harriet Tubman, so we could do an unveiling at that time during our meeting, we could do it slightly before our meeting, you know, but it would kind of, if Matt suggests it, would be a nice way to kick off our first meeting and update the Select Board Room.
Okay, I'll talk to Matt about that. Anyone else?
I have a kind of a question that's a little bit off of our agenda, but something I just wanted to mention to Jane that I meant to mention in my liaison reports. Do we have the breakdown from the Picklewall people on their building expenses that were like really high? We ask them to break that down? You don't have to answer that question right now, because I don't want to get in trouble with other people, but that would definitely be something that I would hope we have at town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, it's a good update to get us for the 22nd. I really agenda, I have an update.
Thanks, Carolyn. Yeah, related to earlier about Mark being the designated for the Commissioner of Trust Funds, maybe having that on the next agenda going forward in the?
As part of our reorg, yeah, as part of our reorg, maybe?
Yeah, just something like that, because.
Because just, Carolyn, there are a bunch of different committees to take a look, so Town Forest, there are a bunch of other ones to?
Right, but this is one that would be one of us. I think that's what Chris is referring to.
I think Town Forest would be one of, one of you.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so we'll, I guess, we can?
If this were like, any of Mark's liaisons, we'd have to?
We're going to, we're going to reorganize, so that's usually?
Were you always just reappointed to the Commissioner of Trust Funds, and nobody ever said anything?
No, it's not that nobody said anything.
No, it's just?
All right, we're not, that's not a future agenda.
It just seemed like a?
Back to the comments about volunteering.
Yeah, I think, Mark, just as far as that goes, right, we reorganize on the 22nd, and then if, I'm trying to look on the?
22nd things typically.
Yeah, typically after that, so that's when we'll, yeah, and we'll, we'll have the previous list, and your name will be, you know, still be there, and then we'll just divvy it up. Karen?
Yeah, just a request for maybe the town manager update. The Shute Street Building, I do believe that their permission, they got approval from CBD C, a few years ago, and I do believe they were running out of extensions, and I was wondering if you could get us a quick update on the status of that. I'm thinking that's a CBD C thing.
Yeah, I can get an update on that.
Yeah, Melissa?
Looking at future agendas, is 52 Sandborne Town Property?
No, that's the, the schoolhouse condos.
Yeah.
And the, I guess it's historic property, and they have to do some upgrades there, I think, to the foyer or the entrance, and so they went to the historic commission, but there's a deep restriction, restriction that the Select Board has to deal with.
It's a formality.
Yeah, so I can send you some information on it.
Nope, that's not, I was just a little confused, yeah, perfect, thank you.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right. Minutes?
I had one small.
Jackie, she's putting up there now.
In the, let's see, the liaison report, I just wanted to correct, it is the Mass Municipal Fiscal Policy Committee, it's called the Fiscal Team, and it's just mentioned twice.
Anyone else while Jackie's doing that? All set. All right. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, what kind do you want?
Minutes?
I was going to let Mark make that other motion.
I withdraw that.
Well, she actually said motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Wasn't seconded, wasn't seconded.
Good, yes, it was seconded.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from March 18th, 2025, as amended?
Second.
Any discussion, saying none, I was in favor. Okay, just for the record, this is my second meeting before nine o'clock, fellas, so you want to give me this chair next year, you can. Now, can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, oh, yeah, no discussion, so all those in favor? Five zero, meeting is adjourned at 8:37. Good job.